So we get to episode six because like I said, we're doing it. We did the abridged version of episode five. We're getting to episode six, life and death. I didn't mean to put part six, but you know.
You got you got the idea.
Yeah, it's actually it. Yeah, it was. It was actually part two. Um, I was looking at the listing and looked at part six and I'm like, I can't wait till we get all of this place. But um, we're dealing with the she are. And if anybody remembers me saying it and those who've read the comics, we already know Charles ain't dead.
He he's been, he's just been, he's been migrated. He changed addresses for a little while in universes.
You know, up there, we get into introduce the she are empire and the Imperial Guard and Deathbird.
That hoe there.
If that was the me me of the Real Housewives of Atlanta. That was all me energy.
That whole family dynamic is like the early two thousands V H one show like it's it was giving flavor of love and I love New York and I love money, all of it.
I wasn't mad at it. When she said it, I'm like, man, you didn't have to say the quiet part out loud like.
No, she was already mad. What you call it called her a pigeon?
Yeah. See, that tells you just how much Deathbird and Alondra always are going at it like.
Yeah.
You're my sister, but I can't stand you. That throne, that throne should be mine. Not the way you act. It's Thor and Loki all over again. Loki, I need the throne. That should be mine. Uh, no, my G, not not the way you act. I I don't think so.
A heel in his cheek because he called her a pigeon.
Right? So.
Still, still, still.
On that island, uh, well, on that planet atop, because what is with the Dom, the heel and the face? Uh, you heard what I said and I said it again. Is everybody there at top? Because they are on some serious shit on their planet. Don't nobody.
Exact that.
But did you see your favorite summers?
Yeah, yeah, but that bitch right there.
Right. This bitch.
Like they open up with the with the with the Imperial with the Imperial Guard fighting the Kree and I'm like the Krees is always in some shit. They just always in shit like in comics. Every time the Kree show up, it was like, okay, which one do you? Because we really, we really ain't got time for being brought into the table. I'm sorry, but we got, we got time. And.
Arten is turning purple.
I would want to look at the throne world the way the same way again, this. Deathbird, have you ever been swallowed? Well, we know she's we know something going on. We know something going on with Charles. He ain't lost too much feeling. Oh, my God. So we, you know, Charles been up there. He's been in his XO armor. So he's been walking around with his with his with his. He's the consort, I should say. He's the consort and she whatever he did, he put it down because she she is in love.
Hmm.
And she's she ready to lock this down. But he, you know, and she she introduces, yeah, she introduces him to the court as her new consort. Uh, saying, you know, he's human, but you, you know, he's the greatest of his kind, blah, blah, blah. And he's just kind of like, I feel like I'm the side piece, but at the same time, not the side piece.
Right.
Is is the vibe he get is vibe I'm getting? He's like.
Charles is your bottom bitch.
That that's that's the vibe I'm getting. Oh, you're the bottom. Okay, somebody had to be the bottom.
Remember, uh, in Guardians, Gamora said, I will not be seduced by your pelvic sorcery. I had a really bad.
But Charles, you ain't got no legs.
I ain't got no legs, but these hips don't lie, baby.
Oh, my God.
You will come back, Trey. Don't you see yourself out?
Greatest sashay that one in there just hat.
Look, so here's the there's this whole thing going on and you know, and Charles is like, I've been up here living life. I've been given a second chance. Wouldn't it be nice once we're married to kind of go away for a little while? He 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 trying to work. He he trying to he trying to play the head game, quote unquote. Without actually doing that, you know? And she picks up on it right away. She's like, you don't have to lie with me. Just say you want to go back. If you want to go back and see your children, that's fine. But he was like, well, you can come with me. You know, and we can do this thing from both ends, you.
I don't, I don't. Did you? How long was I down there when I picked you up? Did you see my feet touch the ground actually?
No, thank you. Like I'm the queen here.
Yes, sir.
But again, it's it's like, it's like, it's like you laid a good game down. Now he knows your tax returns are showing up and he's trying to, he's trying to sell you a dream.
I I just need to go back home for a little bit, for a little bit. You know, I ain't got to stay. I just, I gotta and I I kind of I feel him on it because you know, this is it. The X-Men are his babies.
Your ex, Charles, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but at the same time. I don't know how well, how welcomed you're going to be because they they think you're dead. Yo, 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 main boy has been going through a depressive state. Dealing with your death and amongst other things that you don't know about yet. Because it's act because that takes place as exactly at the same time as episode five is these two things are taking place at the same time, conconcon. They're taking place. So that's why, you know, it didn't happen like that day and then the next day he's picking up on. No, that's happened at the same time. So they're just like, here's your ultimatum. If you stay, we get to wipe your mind. Forget everything about earth. He he he's just like, yes, yes. Then he mentioned Magneto. He's like, but I can't. Well, they don't mention Magneto, but he's like. Meanwhile, over in the desert. Our goddess is taking care of Forge because he done got bit by the demon.
Yep.
Which shout out to Karama Horn. Blur girl, because she asked a very pointed question. While they're trying to get rid of the demon, Forge brings out a magic book. And now and written out and says a spell that gets rid of the demon for how many? Karama puts up, uh, she puts up a question earlier today. She says, we know that Forge is Native American. We also been just been introduced to a new indigenous hero that was created on what if by the name of Kaori. Question is, could that be his mother or his ancestor?
Survey says, yeah.
The only difference is by nature, by design, or just Cheyenne, but it doesn't say both his parents are Cheyenne.
Right.
That's just part of his hair. They just say he's Native American. He's Cheyenne. But is he half Cheyenne? Is he have, uh, what is Mohawk? I think it was Kaori.
But there's, but there's the link. The link is the fact that they do, uh, they do have the same source of quote unquote, uh, magical ancestry, if you will.
Can can I also point out how much those rings looked very similar? To uh, little little that little something, something a little strange about strange about them rings.
It's bad enough. He kind of favors them without the 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 white streaks on the side. It's bad and I'd be like.
Like it's the sanctum saint torn, missing a book. That's all I wanted to know.
His mother could be a sorcerer.
Yeah, that's what that's that's what my head immediately.
He did say his mother was his mother was a shaman that did practice the arts. They never said it was the mystic arts.
Yeah, so it makes you wonder. Is the relation there? It it Kaori doesn't have to be his mother, but is there a relation there? It could be his great grandmother. It could be. Is there Marvel? This is a time to make a strong.
Echo, fucking Echo, by the way.
They're there. Because I think she's Chuck, uh, Chaktor.
If I'm. I can never pronounce that word.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah.
Deal with the spirit realm to like. I'm just saying, I don't know. I don't know what I know, but I might know something about knowing something.
Yeah, you can make. These are very, these could be very well input.
They're they're slowly laying the groundwork to make this very interconnected. Because like we've already seen the watcher, like Karen was saying, the rings when he goes to spell. And old girl that need to be slapped in the mouth, she she referred to Charles as Taran. We hadn't heard that till Guardians. Right. They said it in the original show. I mean, we also got told our Milky Way was a ghetto, so.
I mean, but was she wrong?
She said. Charles said, send me back to the hood and hold the real hands need me anyway.
So our. Where you do work to going through it?
How does Sam Wilson said he's wrong? He's out of line, but he not wrong.
Part of the universe that don't wash their legs.
I like if somebody put the meme, it's just a picture of Deathbird. It's like, if I send you this, just know it means it's ghetto.
Such a such an amazing.
It's wild.
I like to bring it back. Did we get a source for what the claustrophobia was about or?
So so, yeah, her her. So quick, quick update. So Storm's claustrophobia deals with her parents' death. Her parents died in a building colla- her their building was blown up missile. And she was alive, but she was buried under the rubble. That's where her claustrophobia comes from.
Next to her parents.
Next to her parents, yes.
Two pieces continuity. I was like Storm's claustrophobia and if Charles enters your mind, he's giving himself working legs.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
Center at the front of the class and ready.
Yeah. So meanwhile, the she are empire, they are at odds. The Imperial Guard, she looks at Gladiator and says Gladiator, she uh, a little uh, Elontra says Gladiator, if anybody goes against me, take him down. So he quickly looks at Deathbird and was like.
Who want wobbish?
She actually pays me. I don't know what you I was like, only because you're her sister.
That look he gave her was like, all I needed was a reason and I have justification.
Right. At which point Charles decides to play Michelle Pfeiffer from Dangerous Minds.
Right.
Create a whole class, a mental classroom, stand up eating an apple and says, that's enough. Classes of session, session.
I mean, that ball gag apple was pretty disrespectful.
Because she need to watch her mouth.
Nah, that was funny.
And he breaks down to them what they're doing wrong and what they should be doing. Now, at this point, this is where you're looking at Charles. You'd be like, dude, this is one of them times where what you're teaching works, like you're you're reaching them. You're telling them like, hey, I'm telling you about yourselves. My part of the Milky Way might be ghetto. However, I know BS when I see it. Right. I didn't just get this this whole galaxy and this whole uh, uh, royal thing going on on niceties. Y'all been doing the same shit that's been going on with us.
We learned it by watching you.
I don't remember the quote fully, but when he did the demonstration, like you're cutting people down at the knee and then pretending that you're above them, when really you short their entire livelihood.
Very much.
Impose impose their impose your livelihood onto them and and say, hey, we can help you is if you assimilate with with our way.
What you call, what you call peace is mir- what you call peace is merely just quiet oppression. I was like.
I'm sorry. Do we have intercollected colonizers? Is that what we're doing?
That's the first thing I said. I was just like, damn colonizers. We get them down here, you getting them up there and I'm like, damn. This is why, this is why we identify with the mutants so well. We just know bull when we see it.
Gladiator wanted what she's whoop somebody's ass. That's his job. I got to the middle of this meeting. Just tell me who I got to hit.
Like, I don't have time for this. Said Charles, just calling the colonizer a colonizer and nobody said any anything different. Everybody was sitting there like, damn, except for Deathbirds.
Points were made.
The merits and next time.
Also, I love that basically everyone's moments got interrupted because it's like Storm is flying and getting enjoying her new outfit and Charles is teaching a class and Forge and all Genosha's like, oh, hey, niggas are dying down here.
So so after all that Storm is they find the the cacti that can heal heal Forge and he said, the reason why I came here with you is because I know you have a problem with cramped spaces. And I'm like, see, you you looking out. You you on death's bed and you still looking out. You know, you messed up years ago. You didn't know they were gonna do that, but whatever.
Did he get infected by a bite from like a figment of her imagination though? That's what I'm confused.
It was. It was a manifestation of her fears and everything else, like the Shadow King is.
The plague doesn't disappear with the demon. That was what confused me.
Well, it was the fact that she the the fact that her fear had manifested into AKA the demon. That's the reason why when she finally overcame it and, you know, realized that her power would never gone. It was more like a mind over. It was like a mind over matter type thing.
Because it kept. That's why. That's why I had her voice. It was like it was. It's this thing is manifesting itself. But it's in her voice because it's it's dealing with her fears, dealing with her confidence level right now. It's dealing with her her loss and being unsure about a lot of stuff, which we're not really used to seeing from Storm. Like when she walk in the room, that that's that's confidence.
It's literally, it's her versus her. It's literally her in that entire scenario was her versus her. And somebody was pointing, well, I kind of noticed it too, but it's it's kind of a love letter to black women, kind of, even though I'm really tired of this, uh, black women are super women every goddamn we're nodding. Sometimes I'm fucking tired, but but but.
Black girl.
But. Mm hmm, mm hmm. It's it's more of a, um, she she can, she can overcome anything, which I I appreciate very much.
At the same time, can she have a moment to?
Because now what she got to do? Now she got to go and help clean up the fucking mess. Like I'm, I don't, I'm tired. Had a nice vacation, but y'all fucked me up. Y'all really took me out the game for real, for real, but I still couldn't take a break because I got my own goddamn demons coming at my neck and my fucking neck too. I just wanted to eat some chili and chill. That's all I wanted to do.
And when I was getting, I was, I was riding horses and I was letting the hair. I was just enjoying myself.
I got my edges back.
Yeah.
If's tweet killed me. Storm got her original seventy five feet and her forty inch platinum Peruvian bust down back. Remember who the hell she walked them work boots out for thigh highs in a bear torso real quick. Is there somebody else that Storm over the river like living my best life in the tweet underneath it? Uh, that band is back on a plank dying. This ain't about him.
This ain't about him.
It's 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 Storm saying when the adversary has her pretty much in that cramped crawl space. And making it close in on her and she says, I can't breathe. And Bo actually put up a Twitter with with George Floyd. Paired with her saying, I can't breathe. And I think, you know, me personally, I think that I think the studios was like, this is too much realism. This is supposed to be a children's show. No. It's supposed to be X-Men. Deal with it. That's what I'm thinking. The whole toxic behavior is coming from.
If you talk to me when you're supposed to, we maybe we wouldn't have these fucking shows.
I don't think it turned Forge to actually be in love. I don't know. Alondra and Xavier and Forge and Rogue just seem kind of like that just happened off screen. Like I feel like I don't, I don't see the buildup for either of those.
Like Charles.
Listen to Lenny Williams. Let me tell you, maybe you've never been in love like I've been in love. You still wet behind your ears. It's all good. We love you.
I feel like this whole episode, Charles was like, y'all could have just let me die if I was gonna deal with this shit.
So Storm, Storm is able to basically battle her demons. And in the midst of doing that, she realizes that power, that that weapon may have tamped her down, but the rest has been her holding it back, like in that real, just holding herself back, basically.
I don't want to go back. I'm I'm trying to, what Storm Forge got cut off in the middle of talking about something with a white lie? And I'm trying to figure out what the white lie they were being told was. Because I know Storm said it, but I think it was a different.
Iteration.
Context.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it was just the initial approach at the bar versus admitting kind of my fault. You're in this predicament.
Yeah. And it's it's her fight. She fights back. The lightning strikes the adversary, therefore getting rid of it. My girl flies out of the crawl space. Full cellar moon. Edge is back, headpiece, original costume.
Terrorizing the horses.
Satellite is picking up the dago interference somewhere in the middle of the desert. The goddess is back.
That's the part horses just horses is running rapid because of lightning and thunder and she is flying right beside them all happy and stuff.
Really? She posing in midair. I'm like, yo.
I need them boots. I'm sorry. I'm stuck on them shoes. I gotta find them shoes.
And all I can say is, all I can say is, I'm like, this is all great and all, but damn, she flew right past Forge's ass.
Basically being unafraid of anything, I'm flying by everybody. I'm just gonna be me for a minute. Let me have my shine.
The person you meant to go save at first before you decide to do it. I'm dying. I got poison in my chest.
I know how to make you.
You made the gun that shot me. You can wait ten minutes.
Maybe can't. That's the problem.
In the middle, in the middle of your self-discovery, which I'm happy about, I could be croaking.
Could be, but stop it, stop it.
Like she's in the atmosphere and somewhere down, there's a little triangle that says revive just hovering over his body.
But he does, he does kill. She makes the sound that she does make the the cream or whatever. That's that heals him. And while he's recovering in the bed, he flips on the TV, which I find that they hadn't watched TV in so long. They just was just chilling and eating chili. You know? And that's when she sees what happened in Genosha. Now she's taken aback and at the same time, while Charles is teaching his mental class, he gets a strike. And he sees everybody turn to skeleton, like their bodies are burnt away. The globe explodes. He sees Gambit and then Gambit's all of a sudden the skeleton. He collapses. He's like, I got to go home. To hell with everything else. I got to go. I can't be here anymore.
You can never come back. Your family don't like me anyway. That's been this whole episode, like, really?
Listen, listen, what's afar I said, because Deathbird was way more triggering to me than all of episode five. I wanted to punch her in the throat the whole time. I have lived through several death birds in my life. I'm so, I'm so happy to be on the other side. I love my lady. She bought me this amazing hoodie and but ooh, there's some, there's, there are some winches.
Yikesy, yikesy.
Talk about the Milky Way. Have to drop me back on the block, man. My niggas need me right now.
That pretty much. He's just like, you know what? The hell with what you talking about? And he literally, she was like, but what about us? He was like, if.
I've I've never understood us since season three. Y'all just like, it was Phoenix and by the way, we're in love, but y'all just made that a thing. And then even at the end of the show, you didn't die. She just came to call dibs on the body and left.
Pretty much. It's called. It's called rom com. It happens in rom coms all the time. They do. It takes like a week.
That whatever the fuck made more sense at the end of Mutant Mayhem. Every time like every like Forge, I get it Forge and Storm, some time is probably passed off screen. These two, every time they meet, it's just like, we're in love. And I'm like, when do y'all have time for these conversations between trying to murder teen all the goddamn time? And whatever current problem isn't yours, but you keep coming here for it.
For Charles, it could be easier because he can see into somebody's mind and he's like, this everything you do and 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 all that great stuff and and come out. Now you know me and I know you and I don't know. That's.
I'm saying, how unhappy has Charles been in this relationship that like when he took over everyone's mind, he was like, oh, yeah, I forgot I can do this.
I had to do it.
Just why?
Basically, he's like, hey, I gave you, he's basically like, hey, they gave me working legs. I might as well pay it back in.
Yeah.
He dropping dick off.
Yeah, hey, hey, he's like, you ain't getting no more of this peen right now. Um, I got to go home. And 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 that's and I'm like, so that's what it took for you to it. It took for people to die.
Millions.
I gotta go.
Like I felt a disturbance in the forest. My kids went down to humping and happy and it is ruined. I need to go.
Said it. He was like, they were drinking wine and making love. I'm like, yeah, this ain't the kid show no more. Kid show a long time ago.
A few, few, few steps back, few episodes back.
So he's, you know, we get our extra credit scene and it's Balivar Trask and he's running away. And he re- even Balivar, even Trask realized, I I fucked up. Oh, my God. I created something that did what to Genosha?
It was gonna play out asshole. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
He's one of the ones that's like, he's like, I didn't say I hated him. I just don't like him. I lost my job the one. I just didn't say.
In the OG series, he, um,
Oh, he just.
Master Mo tried to get him to put computer chips in people. That should have been the wake up call for him then.
You like to think so.
Master Mo basically said racism was like a line wire virus. You all need to be fixed.
So in somewhere Ultron was like, that nigga spit. So he you realize the big threat is, once again, Mr. Sinister pulling all the strings. The puppet master as if if you will, behind the scenes, doing all this stuff, just like, which which if you read, you know. One through six, everybody.
Yeah.
Shout out to to Mayhem, keeping the straight serial killer face while.
That is always.
I said it in my review. Whoever wrote it, Elon probably owes you money.
Yeah.
And and here the question, the question is on everybody's lips, at least across our community in black Twitter. What the hell happened for Bo? We need to know. We need answers like expeditiously. Like yesterday. Because we know it's not, we we know it's not the OnlyFans thing. He didn't have that anymore. He got rid of it. He got when he got the job to do this show, he got rid of it. He shut it down. So it's not the OnlyFans.
All I can say is either it's a body or he or he met with somebody up high.
How about this? I don't think it's not to be. I mean, no, it could be because we don't know. It's something justified. Because if it wasn't justified, Disney would have been already in front. Like this is what he did. It's what he did. We're still guessing. The shit is justified.
Because it's been what? Six weeks.
And it hasn't came out yet.
He's still speaking on the product like.
Yeah. Y'all enjoy, y'all enjoying what I got, huh?
Unless somebody's side of NDAs.
I think that's what it is.
My first theory.